All right, all those in favor? All right. Um, now we'll have a moment of silence. During that moment of silence, please remember those we have lost within the district this year. Because we have lost a couple more since last month, so. I would have the pledge of allegiance and we have Rosa Lee Falk from Ruby Elementary that's going to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, in invisible duty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call our district arts coordinator, Ms. McGuire, for special recognition.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board, good evening. Chesterfield County School District hosted an attendance awareness poster contest for the month of September. Students were encouraged to submit a poster highlighting why students should attend school using a slogan of their choice. And posters were judged with one winner from elementary, middle, and high school. The winning posters will be shared on the district's social media pages made into larger posters, and tonight we recognize those winners. Our first winner is our elementary school winner, Ms. Rosa Lee Falk from Ruby Elementary School. Our next winner is the middle school winner, Lily Harrington from Long Middle School. And our high school winner, London Green from Sherawah High School. Congratulations to all our winners.
Established in nineteen eighty-two, South Carolina School Board Association, SCSBA's Boardmanship Institute began offering a year-round training focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national educational issues. We are always pleased to honor those board members that have reached one of the sixth level in SCSBA's Boardmanship Institute. Tonight, we are recognizing three board members that have reached new level status. I would like to introduce Mr. Scott Sims as reaching level one status. Next, I would like to recognize Mrs. Kim Birch, reaching level two status. And finally, I would like to recognize Mr. Robert Teal, reaching level five status.
All right, at this time, we have no public comment tonight, and I'd like to welcome the SRO Lee, Jacqueline. Can't read this. The adminis- with, is she here with the link? No, okay. Um, administrators, principals, teachers, advisory board, do we have anyone here from advisory board? Like to welcome all the area citizens. We appreciate you attending our meeting this evening. Board members, you've been given the minutes for September eighth prior to the meeting, if there's no objections, it will be approved by consent. All right, Mr. Kasky, we're going to turn the meeting over to our chief financial officer. For our August review.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, prior to this evening, you all received a copy of the financial review for the month of August. Any questions on that review?
Any questions?
Kind of early in the season.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, our chief academic officer, Ms. Stubbs.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board. I would like to present the curriculum report for October. Um, wanted to mention that with adult education, uh, the adult education program was recently approved to implement a CDL permit class through a workplace literacy program. Um, the goal of the program is to teach potential bus drivers the information needed to, um, pass the South Carolina CDL permit test. In addition, adult education is offering morning and evening ESL classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays at PLC and Sherawah High School. Um, we just saw some, um, uh, some, some of our, our art students with the, with the poster contest. Um, but in addition to that, the district has received the distinguished Arts Program Grant Award from the state totaling forty thousand dollars for this year. Uh, the grant funds will be used to purchase, uh, much-needed musical instruments, art supplies, um, and professional development for teachers. September fifteenth through the nineteenth was National Arts in Education Week. Um, and if you go to our website, you can see many of the activities that took place during this week. Sherawah, Chesterfield, and Mackbee, FFA students participated in the Region Three Tractor Operations and Safety CDE on September twenty-fifth in Darlington. And the top five teams will advance to the state. Uh, Mackbee placed fourth, Sherawah High School placed sixth, and Chesterfield placed eighth. So congratulations to those students. Um, at our elementary and middle schools and as well at the high schools, of course, intercession was last week. We were anticipating, um, around a hundred and seventy-five students at that time when the board report was written. However, we exceeded that and we had close to three hundred students that participated in grades K through eight. So that was very exciting. So students had three days of intensive reading, math, and writing instruction. Um, and so that was very well attended, and so we are excited that we exceeded those numbers. Um, in terms of the federal programs, principals have been holding, um, their, their, their meetings, their Title One meetings at times that are convenient for parents, such as, um, some of these are literacy nights or, um, special events at the school. And materials, handouts, brochures are available to parents. Um, and of course, these are available in, um, various languages as needed. Finally, I do want to mention that, um, our eighth grade students that are participating or taking the geometry with statistics along with eighth grade math standards. Um, Ms. Ms. Sowell and I have been working closely with those teachers to make sure that they are on pace, um, creating pacing guides and, and resources for those teachers. Um, because this is new to all of us, and so we've had, they've had time to collaborate together and, and that has been some, some really good work, um, going on with those teachers. And, and we're very proud of, of everything that they've done to make that successful. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Doc.
Yes, you said about three hundred students.
Two, two ninety-five.
Do you have any method of kind of keep your model of success? But that, because I'd like to know how that's done.
Um, that is, and so we've talked about that, and what we're going to, what we're going to measure our success by is really looking at, um, how the students did on their eye-ready and math and reading, um, in the, um, in the fall. Um, and then we'll be doing our post-test, um, in, you know, December. Um, and so we'll look at those students and how, how they grew. Um, you know, the, the other piece of that, of course, is, um, uh, what teachers are seeing, those formative assessments, those, uh, you know, side-by-side listening to children read and that kind of thing. So, um, we've got some good feedback and, um, and even though it was three days, it was three days of targeted instruction. Um, our literacy coaches helped us, um, as far as pooling, pooling the lessons for those kids that, um, were their areas of need. So it wasn't, so it wasn't just a one-size-fits-all curriculum, but rather really targeted to what those students need. So, um, we, we felt really good about that.
Mr. Swin?
My question is, on your superintendent notes, we had two hundred thousand dollars that was cut from one of the Tyler funds. What area is that coming out of?
Um, so I think that's the Title V funding, that's, uh. That's in multiple areas, I have to check back there with the lady sitting at the back, uh, to tell us a little more as far as where everybody's back, that's coming together.
So that's Title V, because of the rules that we're here. Um, it's kind of something for areas that we have a little more than one, and how we spend it, we consider it as you spend the other kind of funds, but yeah, it was cut from six hundred and eighty dollars to one hundred.
So we had flexibility with those dollars anyway?
Yep, oh, yeah, and, and. But what I, what I will do is, is, um, I will get a report to where we actually spent that money last year, what it was tied to. So you can see if it's salaries, if it was something, you know, where it was, where it was going.
Okay, I'm worried about the students with it. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dot King, you going to give us a discipline report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So good evening, Dr. Ballinger, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Would like to go over the discipline data for the month of September. Cleaned it up a good bit for you, um, this time, so it's a little easy to read. Um, so I'm presenting this data to share an overview of discipline trends throughout the district within our grade levels. The goal for presenting these findings every month is to help improve student outcomes and school climate. So if we look at the high school, uh, we can look at the top five infractions for the month of September were cellphone violations, which were seventeen point two percent of the infractions. Tardies, fourteen point nine percent. Truancy, eight point two percent. ID violations, which is four point nine percent, and cutting class is four point six percent. And I'll sum it all up in just a moment. With our middle schools, our top five infractions for September were, number one, inappropriate behavior, which was thirty-two point five percent of infractions. Inappropriate language, which is nine point three percent of infractions. Disrupting class, which is seven point six percent of infractions. Truancy, which is six point five percent of infractions, and disrespect is at five point five percent of our infractions. And at the elementary level, the number one, uh, infractions or the top for the top five is hit, kick, push, which is at twenty-two point seven percent. Inappropriate behavior was at twenty point one percent. The third was bus violations at thirteen point nine percent. The fourth is truancy, which is at eleven point nine percent, and refusal to obey or defiant, that's at seven point four percent. So overall, district-wide, our top five infractions for September was, number one, was inappropriate behavior, which was fifteen point five percent of district-wide infractions. Truancy, which is eight point five percent of district-wide infractions. Cellphone violations, which is eight point four percent of district-wide violations. Tardies, seven point seven percent of district-wide infractions, and hit, kick, push was six point four percent of district-wide infractions. Which these particular top five totaled forty-six point five percent of the incidents reported in power school district-wide. So, an overview, so across the first two months of school, says student behavior data in power school indicates that a small group of recurring infractions continues to represent nearly half of all incidents reported district-wide. So, the top five categories, like I said earlier, accounted for forty-six percent, roughly forty-six percent of all reported incidents in both August and September. Our most frequent infraction is inappropriate behavior, so it was ranked number one in both months, increasing from eleven point six percent to fifteen point five percent. Our emerging concern is the tardy infractions. It appeared in September's top five for the first time, replacing disrupting class, which was in August. The persistent issues that we have is phone violations, truancy, and hit, kick, push, they remain recurring infractions across both months. And a trend that we have, the overall incident volume increased in September, suggesting a need for continued focus on classroom management and student engagement strategies. Any questions?
Questions? I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
On a lot of these continuous, same child, we'll say, do, does the school contact the parent?
They do, they're required to. And, and of course, as we always say, discipline is progressive, so if they're continuing to do kind of similar in the same category, then the discipline escalates. Um, to a point, depending on the age level and the grade level, it could result, if it's middle or high, could result in a recommendation of alternative school, could result in expulsion if it gets too bad. Um, so it's, it's progressive. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's a lot of numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate you doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, Dr. Ballinger, your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would like to welcome everybody tonight, those in attendance, those joining us online. Um, you know, it's always great to see people that are involved in the school system and what's going on. Uh, there's a couple things that I will discuss before I go into, uh, the presentation tonight, but, um, I did want to remind the board and, and the community that Thursday, October sixteenth, and next Thursday, October twenty-third, will be, uh, late days off for all staff. Uh, there will be parent-teacher conferences from three o'clock to six o'clock on both of those days. And then also, uh, wanted to remind everybody that according to our school calendar, November twenty-fourth is an in-service day and, um, you know, for these late days. So that's a, a trade-off, um, for those late days. And so just wanted to remind everybody of that. But what I really wanted to also discuss tonight was the presentation that, uh, I've been, been doing along with other members of, of my cabinet. Um, that's why actually Dr. Hale's not here tonight, because there was another community organization that wanted to hear about the bond referendum, and so, um, I told her to go to that instead of coming to the meeting tonight. And so she is actually, uh, delivering this presentation and, and maybe I'll be heading to someplace after this meeting to, to talk to another community group. But so far, we've been to all of our communities, we're trying to get out, uh, just to give the information so that people are informed about what this bond referendum represents. And so, uh, we always just kind of start out that, uh, you know, on November fourth, everybody will see countywide one, actually countywide, um, question, and that will be for a bond referendum for the school district on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, just a little background, we have over eleven hundred staff, faculty and staff, I believe we have over six hundred that are just educational. We have sixteen schools and over six thousand six hundred students. So what will everybody see on our ballot, or on the ballot when they go to the box, um, on November fourth? So voters are going to be asked to decide whether we can access some funding upfront. Um, that's the whole purpose for this, is we want to be able to get that upfront funding so that we can do multiple projects at a time instead of having to wait for the revenue to hit the coffers and build up and then do one project, and then we have to wait again. And so it, it pushes that timeline over a multiple year where maybe we can get a lot of this done in a shorter time span, because now we would have it all, and we'd be able to do multiple projects within multiple areas and within our county. Um, so, uh, and then, you know, this will be paid by the penny sales tax that was approved last November fifth of twenty twenty-four. And so that's what they're going to see on the ballot. Um, why do we need this? Uh, simply because South Carolina law only allows the school board to bond at eight percent above the value of the taxable property in the district. And so therefore, this is way above that, and so we have to go out and ask our, our, our communities to, to approve us doing this so that we can get that money to, to be able to address the concerns within our schools and, um, in a timely manner and be more efficient. So why do we want the, why, why are we asking for our community to, to approve this bond referendum? So again, it allows the district funding flexibility, uh, so that we have multiple projects going on simultaneously. Uh, it allows to earlier starts, which will allow us to finish things earlier. You know, it also will allow us to, to actually avoid cost increase. We all know that over the past five to ten years, or actually five years since COVID back in twenty twenty, the, the, the cost of materials and supplies in a lot of areas have just skyrocketed. Um, you know, if we're able to get this in a, in a shorter time period, then that's going to actually help us use that, those dollars wisely. And so then it helps us to get our students into better facilities and more updated facilities quicker. So what are the projects going to fund? Again, as we, oop, there it went. Okay, there was a pause, sorry. Um, again, what is, what are, what is this going to fund? It's going to fund everything that was approved back in twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four. So nothing changed as far as, you know, we, we didn't have any, any changes with this, because since the money that's going to pay the bonds off is the money that comes from the penny sales tax, we have to abide by what the penny sales tax referendum was for. And so this ties into that penny sales tax. So again, it's safety and security, it's accessibility improvements across the district, uh, your digital signage. Um, I know we're already putting RFPs out for, for digital signage and some roofs, we've already got some things going on. Um, but these are small projects compared to some of the larger projects that we're going to have. Uh, general renovations and upgrades to aging facilities, uh, get our students in more updated facilities where things are. Get our students in more updated facilities where things are more appeasing, more climate control, just, just things that we need to address within our schools. Additional classroom space to, to multiple schools, and that's really in the Pageau and the Mackbee area when we're looking at additional classrooms. Now, we do have some additions and some other projects at some of our other schools, but really, we do, are, are, we're, we're trying to address that growth in those areas as well. Upgrades and additions to our football fields and to our tracks. You know, this will allow us to, to try to attack multiple projects at a time, again, when it comes to our tracks. And then additional gyms. And then we have other facilities that, that are also on, on the docket, that were, were in the, the first proposal with the penny sales tax. So still, those things, same things are all in there. Upgrades and improvement to the career and technical education programs as well. So again, how will this benefit us? It's going to benefit us by getting safer, modern facilities that will benefit students and staff. It's really going to give us quality schools and facilities that will attract families, businesses within our communities. And then give us an opportunity to enhance our career and technical education programs to prepare students for the local workforce as we move forward. I always tell everybody if they have questions to give me a call, but then I recap with everything to just say, okay, throughout what we've, what we're hearing from our community, we're, we're hearing two questions. One, will this raise my taxes? The answer is no. No. This will not raise taxes. This is going to use the penny sales tax to pay off the bonds. So there is no tax increase whatsoever with this referendum. It just allows us to get the money upfront quicker. And then, and then I think the second question we get, I just lost it for a second there. I'm looking at Kevin crazily here for a time, but.
Percentage of, what does, how much does the eight percent represent? When you say we'll borrow more than eight percent, because that's the question that I get.
Of more than the eight percent of what our, our property was? I'd have to point to Kevin at that one to.
That's all? Okay, that's, that's bigger than Porter.
And then I think the second question we're getting a lot of is why, why do we need to, why, why are we wanting to do this? It just allows us to do multiple projects at a time, you know. Going through my listen and learn, you know, in each of the communities, I have found that, that, you know, everybody in each community feels that sometimes that, that there is not a focus within their community. You know, whether you're in Sheraw, Mackbee, Chesterfield, or Pageland. And so we want to make sure that we're, we're sharing the wealth and making sure that we are able to, to be doing multiple projects at the same time within our various communities throughout the county. So that will also help us to, to get that and do that a little bit quicker.
What platform do you need to communicate personnel to? Do you recommend pass or using those same platforms? Like communicating everything that you're sharing with the community?
So we are using multiple platforms. And that's a great question, Dr. Coleman, and, and thank you for asking that, because that leads me into my next, next part. So one thing we're doing right now is that each week, we are sending a caller home to all of our parents. And each week, we're doing a different flyer or a different video. And, and I do need to thank Nicole sitting over there, that she has created a lot of this. Most of this, all of this, I will give her credit for everything. I don't get the credit for anything. She, she has been putting all this together. And then we do send that out to parents via email and text and just let, letting them see something different each, each week as we're building up. We're also getting ready to do a video. I know she's been hounding on me about getting the video done, so I've got to get that done this week. But I did also do a radio spot with, with Ms. Pig over in, in Sheraw. And we, I know that was out also through, I think we had a couple of football games this week that they were playing that, so we did push that out. I'm going to do a, an interview with the link. Now, as far as some of the other things that it is on our website. So Ms. Scolic, do you mind going to our website? So I do want to describe that people can go to, if you go to our website. Okay. Okay. And on the presentation, click the link, it'll take you right to it. But, but if you go to our website, on the top left on our top bar, it says My CCS. And if you select My CCS on our website, then down below, there's a community link. And if you click the community link, it then takes you to a bunch of information on the community, but the first bullet is bond referendum. And if you go to that, all of our information, and I think even this PowerPoint now should be on there or will be on there, but all of our flyers, all of our videos, everything we have, we are, we are pushing out through, through there. So again, My CCS, you go down to community, it's on the bottom right. And then right there at the top, Bond Referendum, when you open that link, then you have, there's, there's the PowerPoint and a lot of other things. We do have it scrolling through. And then again, we're trying to visit as many, have as many committee or community meetings that we, that we need to attend. You know, we're just trying to, to get it out there as best as possible. So I don't know what other platforms that you guys used last time. I know we're, we're using all, all of social media. I think it's also on Facebook and, and all of those, and Instagram, so all those outlets as well. And again, it's just to inform the public, you know, because we can't tell them how to vote. But it's just to give them the correct information that one, it's not going to raise their taxes. And it will help us to get the funding upfront, so that we can do multiple projects and, and really use our money wisely.
And I believe we're going to have to encourage our voters to get out and vote, because it's the only thing on the ballot.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask Kevin, I know you've been out here at the time, and the first thing that happened was the sales tax. Did we do a bond referendum on that first? We didn't do a bond referendum on that.
It should have been just a penny sales tax.
It, penny sales tax, right? That was all we did. But that was all, when we voted for that, that was all on one ballot at one time. We didn't have to go back and vote again like we did with this. That's what I thought, okay. All right, thank you.
So it's the same thing as what we did back then, it's just we're doing it in two parts instead of one?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir. So, Madam Chair, that's my presentation tonight, as far as for the superintendent's report. Again, I just wanted to provide this information to all of our constituents. And if they have questions, feel free to give me a call, reach out to me, come by, visit. I'll be happy to talk to anybody anytime and anywhere concerning their questions about November fourth.
Be careful about the underwear at any time.
Well.
But that's all right, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll set you up.
We better be careful with that. I, I do agree with you on that, Mr. Sweeney.
So if anyone need, needs to tell him where else he needs to talk, please let him know. Mr. Sweeney, I believe Kevin was probably in diapers about the last.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I know, but I just figured, I just figured that he probably went back and reviewed a little bit of it. That's the only reason I asked. Yeah, if he was born. Yeah.
Any other question? All right, we'll move into action items. Ms. Catch? With human resources, we'll hear from your personnel exhibits, please.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board, prior to this evening, you received the personnel exhibits for review, and I recommend for your approval, Exhibits A through F.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Okay. Our next agenda item is a, a request, a proposal to add a position for maintenance supervisor. This position would cover the day-to-day supervision of maintenance and work orders. And the position would report to the Director of Facilities and Maintenance. I would like to note that non-labor funds will be moved to fund the cost of the new position, so it would not be adding to the budget, it would be a budget-neutral position add.
All right.
So I recommend for your approval to post this vacancy and add a new position for maintenance supervisor.
So moved.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Also, prior to this evening, you received, for your review, two proposals for substitute teacher and substitute classified staff increase in pay. This proposal to increase substitute pay would enhance recruitment efforts and improve retention. So for your approval, we actually have two proposals for you to review and consider for approval.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
One is, maybe three or four questions. But anyway, the first one would be that substitute teachers for, with an associate degree and a high school diploma, diploma, you have the same proposed rate for both of those. And I just thought that an associate degree should be in a different place by itself. That's, that's the first, that's the first question. The second question is, when we did these proposal, Proposal One and Proposal Two, what comparison did we use? Did we compare it with other school districts to come up with this? And the third question is, what are you all recommendation in terms of Proposal One and Proposal Two?
So I've got notes, if you want, on that. So, so on question number one, and we'll, we'll kind of tag theme here if we need to on, on this. So with the associate's degree and the high school diploma, those were already set. So I think they were at sixty-eight dollars before. So that's something that, that's how the district has always had the, as far as the substitute in those two categories. Now, if the board wants to move that out, that's privy to the board. If you want to separate and do one for, you know, a non-degreed and then a, a, a separate associate, that's up to the board if you want to do that. But historically, it has always been tied together, associate's degree and high school diploma for as long as, you know, I don't know. How long has it been that way?
It has been that way as long as I can remember. But as a general rule, we do require an associate's degree unless we have a recommendation letter from a principal. And in those cases, we would hire with the high school diploma. So the rate has been the same. But we could certainly look at.
But I mean, if this board, if the board wants to adjust the rates and to add a different scale, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it. But I think what, what is key there is that they typically have only been approving a high school diploma if it's upon the recommendation of a high school or, or of a school administrator.
Correct, yes, sir.
What about other districts? Did we make a comparison with other districts?
We did, yes, sir. And Proposal One would be in line with surrounding districts.
So Proposal One would be in line as far as associate degree and high school accurate to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Actually, for all of the levels.
So your, your recommendation is, is Proposal One?
To be in line, yes, sir.
Okay. Then I want to go down to substitute classified, where you have custodian, instructional assistant, food service operator. Current hourly rate is seven dollars and seventy cents, and we propose that they move up to ten dollars. And I just don't think that's fair when they can go to McDonald's or Wendy's and make fifteen dollars an hour, and we're going to bring them in. And, and doing what we call knuckle work or elbow work and pay them ten dollars an hour. So I, I, I would definitely like to see that proposal rate go up. Do we make a recommendation now, or do we, do you all go back and bring it back to us?
I mean, if the, you guys can make as a board, you can make a recommendation now.
I, I like to, so this is comparison with other school districts? This, this substitute classified? That's what they're doing, ten dollars?
I would need to verify.
No wonder we can't keep nobody.
Classified, correct, yes, sir.
So they, they're basically paying ten dollars, other districts?
I would need to confirm that.
Oh, okay, all right. I like to see what other districts are doing. Really, I like to see it move up to fifteen or twenty dollars. Really.
Now, I will say, we will be going through a budget season and a cycle. And we, we do need to adjust some of, a lot of our scales to, to, to be in more of alignment with some things. So we'll, we'll be having some in-depth discussions on those.
So you're saying we're going to come back and revisit this again?
We will for next school year. But this is right now, just kind of to get us through at this point in time. Well, I would suggest that.
Go ahead.
Correct. And as Dr. Ballinger said, you know, we're, we're making sure that we align with our skills that we currently have in place that, that he would like to review.
Madam Chairman, since Dr. Ballinger has informed us that we're going to go back and revisit this again, I would like to propose that we do the substitute classified at least fifteen dollars a proposed hourly rate and leave the others up on a Proposal One that they are recommending until we have a chance to review it again.
Okay, so you're going to go with Proposal One on substitute teachers and your hourly rate at fifteen on the substitute classified?
Right, and I'm going with Proposal One because the administration has recommended that.
Okay. All right, and we have a second, any discussion?
I, I would have a question on that is, what, do we know what our starting hourly rate for those positions are at a full-time rate? Are we getting into, to where we've got a classic, I mean, where one of these subs would be making at or more a, a starting rate?
Yes.
I mean, that's.
Good question. So they probably need a boost.
But that is the thing. Because then you just, oh, I'm going to be a sub and I'm going to go work at a higher rate than, than my.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, that opened up a can of worms. We definitely gonna need, we definitely gonna need to revisit this.
I understand your passion. This is, this is really a kind of, we're struggling with subs, we're struggling with support with our classified subs. This was just right now, a temporary fix to try to get us more people coming in that maybe we can attract, um, to help us in the short term, because we know we have to have a long-term fix to this, to this problem. But right now, this is something we, we felt would at least help us maybe move that needle in the direction we need to go. Um, you know, I would agree with you, Mr. Sims, um, as far as, you know, we, we do need to be cognizant of the rates that we're, we're offering, because then we don't wanna get into the situation to where other people that are currently being employed, they feel that, you know, we don't value them because we're not currently addressing their scale at this point in time, when we know that that's a bigger monster as far as when it comes to the number of staff that may be tied to a scale. And so, I, I don't know how many substitutes we have classified, um, how many are in those, in those categories, uh, but I can tell you it's far less than the actual people that they're subbing for. And so, I would be just, you know, wanted to be, would like the board to just be aware of, you know, that we don't want to, to make other employees feel that they're less valued, um, and, and I, I do appreciate the, um, you know, the support and the understanding of where we're at as a school district and, and with our, our salary scales. Um, but I, I also feel that when we look at our salary scales, that needs to be a bigger conversation, because now we're affecting a lot more people. This is only sle- this is only affecting.
A small group.
A small group that, that, that's not under contract.
Right.
These people are not under contract. Those others, we've given them a contract, they're coming on a regular basis. Um, these people only come in when they have to come in.
Okay.
Um, during, during that time. And so it's not affecting a large group as, as what a salary scale.
Based on the information I received, I, I, I withdraw my motion. Keep it as it is.
Leave it as.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Alright, second. Okay, all those in favor? Alright.
Would you like to skip ahead to the added, um.
You wanna skip over to the G? While we're, while she's up there.
Yeah, while she's up there.
Okay, please.
Thank you. Uh, Chesapeake County Adult Education has received a family literacy grant for the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, um, grant cycle. Um, and we propose posting a vacancy for an adult education parent educator to, um, to help in that. Um, this would be a part-time position, um, and it would be fully covered by the grant, the cost of it.
Alright, can I have a motion to accept this?
One more.
Any discussion? Is all in favor?
None.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. King?
Again? Alright, so, good evening again, Dr. Ballinger, Madam Chair, and the members of the board. You have a list of policy administrative rules and revisions. At this time, I would like to recommend them as presented for a second reading and approval.
Alright, you remember we, um, had first reading on all of these to keep them from reading them again? Do I have a motion to accept second reading on this, these policies?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright, lastly, I would like to present the following policy revision for a recommended first reading. Policy GCD, professional staff vacations and holidays. This update allows administrative staff and district office staff who are twelve-month employees to observe the school board-approved school calendar holidays without having to take vacation days.
Have a motion to accept this policy?
This first reading, right?
First reading.
Understood.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stubbs, you're back.
Good evening again. Um, I would like to note that going forward with our overnight field trips, um, we're going to be recommending approval from the board for these trips. Um, in the future, we will have these, uh, trips for you, um, at the beginning of the school year, and then again in February for the spring, so that you can see all of those trips, um, at one time, and we won't go through them, you know, um, at each meeting. Um, so that's the, the plan moving forward. Um, with that being said, um, I would like to recommend for your approval, um, three overnight field trips, um, that I think you have been given for, um, various students, um, to go on these, um, field trips.
Uh, made a motion?
Well, I can ask one?
Yes, sir.
And I'm okay with that. But that's just very, you, you have nothing to come up unexpected.
Um, so Dr. Ballinger and I discussed that. If you, would you like to?
So, so when we look at, we wanna do a little more pre-planning. Now, there are gonna be some cases for emergency, um, when, if you, maybe you have an athletic team, or maybe you have a band team, uh, you know, you're, you're banned, qualified for state or something of that nature, and, you know, so they don't have that. So we would automatically and put this in policy to where situations like that, it would be an automatic, they would get to go on that overnight travel, but all other trips would have to be, um, pre-planned and brought to us to deliver to the board in September and February of each year. Now, there's always those emergency ones that we would bring in to the board, uh, but we would want to avoid those as much as possible, because we want to pre-plan.
Another question, um, is this kind of when you lost the amount that the school board has to approve these, uh, field trips?
Um, there's, there's, schools have done it in various ways. Um, you know, there is always, you know, when it comes to, to field trips, I think it's, it's best that the board is aware of those out-of-state field trips, that the board has a say in what happens with the out-of-state field trips. I mean, ultimately, you know, for, for us as a, as a district and as administrative team, um, you know, plus, I'll just be honest, I mean, there's, there's a lot of liability when you go to out-of-state field trips.
Thinking that it was coming back to us, yeah.
And, and there's, you know, if, if I'm approving it, or if the principal's approving it, then, you know, the board's still liable. So you might as well be in the know from the get-go.
Just curious, 'cause we never done it before, the three in the master.
It, it's better to bring it before you now than for you to find out about it later.
That's.
But, but I will say that we have updated the way that, um, field trips are done. Um, there is a pre-approval for any overnight trips or out-of-state, um, there, with the itinerary and everything that's going on. That's submitted to the principal and then to, um, the director and so on. So there is a process in place, and this is just that, another layer, so that y'all are aware of, of what's going on.
Okay.
Well, what I can throw in there would be, uh, I'd like to overview one and run it through, about, that the board approved it. And I think that's, again, very, I, I am sure that, this boundary and country, the end there, if the trip needs to be planned, they're gonna go through all those procedures and, uh, legal applications, things like that. And, again, in order, I think it's always good that to add another level of approval, uh, if the man is, you know, kind of slowing down and happening problems, especially if you don't have any situation with students that cause a problem.
Uh, I, I would always say, just because there was not a situation before, sometimes there, there, you never, you cannot see the future and, and what could happen, um, in going on down that road. Um, you know, again, this is, to for- to add it to, to the agenda to, to bring before the board is, is really not a, a, not too much of a step, because I think if we put this in place with that policy that everybody is pre-planning, we're gonna have them all listed in September. Um, and, you know, it, it, it puts it back on our, our staff, it puts it back on the principals to also, with their, with their teachers, to make sure that they are planning these things, and that they're not coming up and saying, oh, hey, we've got this trip next week, can we go? Well, you know, there, there has to be some foresight, um, into that, and I think that this just helps with, with making sure that we do get that oversight with the, you know, not just with the administration and with, with my office, but also with the board in, in knowing. Um, and for me, if I'm gonna have to send you, you know, send the board an email to say, hey, I'm approving this out-of-state field trip, then to me, it's the same thing as bringing it to a board meeting and say, hey, here's the out-of-state field trip, just wanna approve it. Um, you know, 'cause one way or the other, we have to get the, you know, the board needs to be notified of the out-of-state field trip.
I'm looking at the thing here. One of these trips is to an overseas territory.
Puerto Rico's not overseas, it's United States.
I understand that, however, it's not in the continental United States. Um, I would like to offer, they need to take plenty of chaperones. That there's a safety issue there that I have some major concern about. That, that needs to be addressed.
Was that Puerto Rico?
Yeah.
Well, that's U.S. territory, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
But it's not in the continental United States. And I would like to see us make sure that we got that. I don't know what they're, I, I just have a little concern about that.
And typically on those trips, they do have, and they set those up with, with plenty of chaperones before, um, you know, I've actually been in schools where they, you know, go to Europe, um, with, uh, you know, maybe it's the, the Spanish club, or, or French club, or they, you know, they, every year, they, they go and attend those events and with the, with that, with that teacher and that group of teachers and, and staff members. So, uh, I am familiar with that, but that is also a trip that I think when you're, although you're flying.
The parents are, I want to go as much as the student, so.
You know, to, to allow the members to, to be aware of that and, and to, to bless that trip.
And I think the, the purpose was to ask, ask approval so that she could get everything started, because it's going to be, you know, you know, a.
Lengthy.
A lengthy with making deposits and that kind of thing. So, um, you know, that we could certainly get you any information you were requesting.
And it is better for us to know when our students are on a field trip, because people ask and we don't know.
I agree that we need to know, but I just think that the buck need to start with the super tender. But we still need to know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we, we hired him, so he, he, he needs to make sure that he follows the whole of rules and regulations, you know, uh, because if we have a, a trip to come up in a couple of weeks that somebody missed, he can sign off on it and let us know. But I agree that we need to know. I just don't know whether we just need to approve it or not.
Well, we shouldn't have one coming up in, in a couple of weeks.
Well, I mean, it's, that is, now. Okay, well.
Madam Chair, I have a motion. I've made the motion to approve. I need a second, I got the motion.
I need a second.
It needs a second.
What's the motion?
It needs a second approval.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Well, what is the motion?
It, it was to notify us of.
Three overnight travel trips.
And field trips for the students, basically, six months in advance each, twice a year.
Okay.
Alright, we had a motion, we had a second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Light sign? Any nays? Alright, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My turn. Alright, board members, we need to select delegates for the, uh, SCASPA Conference, uh, December sixth. That's in, let's see, that one is in Trossing, again. And I only have no, of two members that are going.
Um, I'm going.
Yeah, be sure to let Becky know. I need like three delegates. There's our three delegates. And all those in favor? And if anybody else is going, please let them speak, you guys. Alright.
Skip the side of the.
Yep. When, when's the deadline? Or is it past? Okay. Alright, November tenth board meeting is here at five-thirty. Uh, executive session at five o'clock. And now we need to go into a second executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into a second executive session.
I move to enter executive session to discuss matters pertaining to student matters and legal matters.
Second. All those in favor? Alright. We don't know when we'll be back.
First we take the background of the second session.
Okay.
All right. Uh. We'll be in the first one.